Venture out to the Village of Monroe for everything you need this holiday season.
Dashing through Monroe for coffee and a bite. Can't forget the shovel and sled in case it snows tonight. Fresh baked bread, Christmas trees, poinsettias for the wife. Cookie baskets full of fun and cakes that will delight. Accessories, handmade wreaths, clothing just your size. Wonderful place, the Holiday Shop Monroe is always bright.
Venture out to Monroe this holiday season.
Evening and welcome to the Board of Trustees Village of Monroe meeting for this evening on December 5th. If we could all stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first order of business is the continuation of public hearing, introductory local law 2023 amendment to chapter 182 on the taxi cabs. I need a motion to open that or continue the opening of that public hearing.
Barringer will make the motion?
Second.
Carl is second.
Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Aye, so carried. Okay, the public hearing is now open regarding the amendment to chapter 182 taxis. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please do so. Just for the public edification, just to be clear, the continuation of tonight's public hearing on the taxi cab chapter 182, I'd just like to read that the public hearing is being held this evening on December 5th, 2023, in the boardroom of the village hall, Seventh Stage Road, Monroe, New York at 7:00 PM to review a local proposed law titled Amendment to Chapter 182 Taxi Cabs. The village board trustees finds that it is appropriate to conform its local regulations of taxi cabs to ensure requirements set forth in the New York State Vehicle and Traffic Law 370. Anyone wishing to speak on that matter, please. Okay, just for the record, there is no one here this evening to speak on this amendment to chapter 182, local law of 2023. I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Carl will make the motion.
Carl is second.
Discussion? Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Y are aye, so carried, thank you. Okay, next order of business is the adoption of the meeting minutes from our, yeah. Meeting minutes of November 21st are submitted by the clerk. I need a motion to accept.
Barringer will make the motion?
Carl is second.
Discussion? Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye. O'Connor, aye.
And Y are aye, so carried. Okay. All right, next order of business is the adoption of local law 2022 of 2023, the amendment to chapter 182 Taxi Cabs. I need a motion to accept this into law as submitted.
Carl will make that motion.
Second?
Barringer will second.
Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Y are aye, so carried. The next order of business is the adoption of local law 23 of, excuse me, local law 23 of 2023, Village of Monroe Place of Worship in Schools. I need a motion to accept the local law as submitted.
I'm sorry.
23? Is that, you had, last meeting you had 22? Okay, so it is 20, 23, okay. Okay, so adoption of local law 23, Village of Monroe Place of Worship in Schools. I need a motion to accept? Okay, Village of Monroe, Village of Monroe Place of Worship in Schools amending chapter 200 of the village code and zoning. Whereas an introductory local law titled Village of Monroe Place of Worship in Schools was introduced before the Village of Monroe and whereas upon duly noticed and published, a hearing was held on said local law on May 2nd, June 6th, September 5th, and September 14th, where at public discussion was heard concerning the merits of said local law. And after hearing all, from all those present wishing to speak and acknowledging the written comments that have been received, the board of trustees declared the public hearing closed on September 14th, 2023. And whereas local law was duly referred to the Orange County Planning Department pursuant to GML 239, which responded by letter on May 23rd of 2023, identifying the local law as a local determination. And whereas the local law was referred to the Village of Monroe Planning Board pursuant to 200-77, and comments were received by letter dated September 5th of 2023. And whereas as the board of trustees as lead agency under Seeker issued a negative declaration on September 14th, 2023 determining that the local law is a type 2 action under Seeker, and how therefore be resolved the adoption of the local, introductory local law titled The Village of Monroe Place of Worship in Schools of the Village of Monroe is hereby adopted on December 5th, 2023 as local law number 23 of 2023 of the Village of Monroe. This local law shall take effect upon filing with the state, Secretary of State. I need a motion to adopt this local law.
Barringer will make the motion?
Second.
Carl is second for some discussion. Now, this doesn't prevent anybody from using their, their home or converting it to House of Worship, they're just, they would have to go to the planning board, is that?
That is correct.
So it's just another step and then the planning board would, would review?
I just like they would review any other application or a neighborhood or residential or community place of worship or school.
Okay, and they would determine buffers and, and screening and, and off-street parking and stuff like that, that would all be handled?
Yes, within the bulk requirements that are also adopted.
In the local law?
Okay, thank you.
And this is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Okay, so we had a first, second, for discussion?
Yep.
Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye. O'Connor, aye.
Y are aye, so carried, thank you. Okay, next.
Mayor, I, I'm sorry, I think there was a typo on that resolution. I think it was a type 1 action. As, as the board will recall, this was all adopted as part of comprehensive plan overview and bundle of local laws, and Seeker was done on all of that. So it doesn't really affect the adoption of the local law. The Seeker negative declaration stands on its own, but I would like to point that out in the record.
Would you like me to reread this?
No.
Okay, so it is a type 1 action.
Yeah, I believe it was. In any of that, a negative declaration was adopted by.
Adopted. Okay. Okay, next order of business, the authorization to sign the 2024 Independence Day Garden State Fireworks. Trustee Carl?
Uh, yes, we did, let me just pull this up here. Resolved, the board of trustees approve a contract with Garden State Fireworks, Post Office Box 403, Millington, New Jersey 07946 for furnishing and conducting firework display on Wednesday, July 3rd, parentheses rain date of Friday, July 5th, in the amount of $21,000, 50% deposit and $10,500 due with signing a contract, $10,500 due immediately following display. Further resolved, Mayor Dwyer has authorized a signed contract with Garden State. So I'll put that in the form of a motion.
O'Connor will second.
Discussion? I just have one quick thing, did we eliminate the couple of pieces that was on the contract originally?
There was, there was some wordage taken out, not all of it, but some of it.
Yeah, I would use that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we had a first and second, call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye. O'Connor, aye.
Y are aye, so carried. Next order of business, Lincoln's birthday holiday rescheduled, resolve the border, excuse me, resolve that due to clerical error, the board of trustees accept the rescheduled holiday date from February 9th, 2023, Friday, February 9th, 2023, Lincoln's birthday to Monday, February 12th, 2024, to the following 24, 2024 calendar. I need a motion to accept.
Barringer will make the motion?
Ferraro, second.
Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Y are aye, so carried. We have a couple of things that I'd like to make sure we get on the record. We have our Saturday.
Winterfest?
Okay, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, there was one other thing.
Tam.
Yeah. I apologize, we did have one additional item. Trustee Carl?
Yep, resolved, the board of trustees accepts the quote from Tam Enterprise Incorporated, 114 Hartley Road, Gosha, New York, 10924, for the supply and installation of one new six-inch Crispin flanged butterfly valve with new hardware. Total cost of the emergency repair is $8,155 to be split, $3,120 to be allocated from budget line F-8330.250, $5,035 from purification equipment F-8330.4530, purification equipment maintenance, and I'll put that in form of a motion.
O'Connor will second.
Question?
Yeah, Tam, Tam also has the emergency contract work for the County of Orange, so we can piggyback off of that.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, first and second, for discussion, call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye. O'Connor, aye.
Y are aye, so carried. Okay, I don't have anything else.
I have a couple of things. So Winterfest is Saturday from 3:00 to 6:00. Hoping we have a great turnout and great weather. It's usually a great event every year. Also, Monroe Woodbury Voice Ensemble was invited to perform at Radio City tomorrow before the Rockettes perform, which I think is pretty impressive. We know that they are, they're pretty amazing, very talented. And the Monroe Woodbury Cross Country Team finished 20th at the National Championship in Oregon. We have some really fast runners. I know we had some of them here last year, so I wanted to wish them congratulations.
Also too, Sunday we have the candy drop, right?
Shabbat.
Shabbat?
Shabbat, I think that's.
What time is that?
I think 4:00. I don't know if I'm going to be able to make that this year. I did speak to Rabbi Burstyn the other day. I stopped and saw him, dropped on, dropped him off a copy of that Neighbor's magazine.
Oh, is it in?
I say, you probably want another copy, it is.
That's right, he was in it.
He was in it, right?
Yes.
But he said around 4:00, things were going to get going. They're, they're doing some sort of a ice sculpture of the menorah. But I'll try to get there. I got my family here from Colorado, so I'm going to spend some time with them.
It's on the property.
Yeah, it was great last.
Yep, up on Gilbert Street.
Good, good. So anybody wish to come out, please do. Okay, that's all I have. Council, do you have anything right now?
I got a couple of things.
Yep.
New chairs, we gotta, I know we've, we've talked about new chairs here, sometimes these chairs sink down.
Andy would like one.
Feel like you're sitting on a milk crate. Have we heard anything from One Stage Road yet? Nothing, huh?
They sent me a copy of the easement, which I didn't think was determinative of anything. So I'll leave that up to their attorney to bust that out.
There was a call that did come in from the contractor today, maybe, maybe, I don't know if that was, was its topic.
Okay, and I know the town was in communication with the Village of Curious Joel on the salt shed that they put that's right on top of the aquifer for our well. Have we heard anything more on that?
I haven't.
Nothing at all, because the salt shed's still there, full of soil. And we are testing our well monthly right now. I just got Ernie going on monthly for the winter months. That's, that's very concerning.
You just ask the clerk tomorrow, let's get a letter out to the town and ask them for an update.
And then the last thing I have is our street light upgrade. I know Mayor, you and I have been working on that for a while, but I was driving around the backwoods of Lake Placid this weekend, and there's all LED streetlights up there. I don't know why we don't have them here. I'd like to get moving on that.
Okay.
Were they bright or no?
Yes.
Too bright or no?
No, no, because you know what, it's a directional light. It comes right down. It's not like the high-pressure sodium vapors where it splatters the light. The light is directional, I have to debate. It's actually a big improvement.
That's good.
But we've done a lot of work on that in the last year and a half.
Yep.
So I'd like to, I'd like to push that across the finish line.
Okay.
That's, and that, that's all I have.
Trustee O'Connor?
I'm good.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in the public?
Evening, Mayor, trustees, attorney, secretary, how are you today? Like John, you said beautiful decorations, very nice outside there, it's really nice. And I appreciate that the menorah this year is on. Last year I took to the Hanukkah to put it on, now it's already on for December, which is beautiful. It's very nice and, well, there's one every night, so I think when Hanukkah starts, we should start with a.
One.
One, two, and then we have to say which side, like the right, left?
Right to the left.
Oh, is that a rotation?
Which is your right?
It's, it's to the left?
It depends where you look at it. If you look, it has to be, it starts from right to left, but depends if you're coming from this side of the lake or the other side of the lake.
Oh, okay.
So you're going to have to.
I'm walking up to the island, it's the furthest candle on the right.
Yes.
And then the next one to it, it's going to get to the end at the.
Yeah, the last, longest night, and the last night is like, and we eat extra donuts every night towards it, like the first night is one, so by the eighth night we have to have eight.
You have to have eight donuts?
Yes, adults only.
When, no, when's that, so Thursday, Friday?
It's Thursday night.
It's Thursday night.
Happy Hanukkah.
You all invited anytime to stop by, it's parties.
Put into the music.
Yes, yes, well.
On the 7th.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah, we starting, it'll play.
Very nice.
So the reason I'm, I'm standing up in front of you is, is I see again that at night it was adopted this, this new law about the place of worship. And as John, you made clear that, that it's not to block anything, it's just it has to go through the entire process. The question is that, we all know that the process is a long process, okay? It's going through the planning board will take a long time. For us, this is, this is mandatory, especially when it comes to the holidays and when it comes to Saturdays, to Saturdays and holidays, that in order to pray, we have to have 10 people minimum, and, and it's obviously no cars involved because at the time, Saturdays and holidays, we're not driving. So I just want to know, first of all, I mean, why was it so important to push this through, especially when there was so many oppositions to it? I mean, especially it came from the county oppositions, the Attorney General put a strong opposition to it. And what is happening is, after this happening, I mean, this is a beautiful, peaceful village, everybody's living together. What triggered that this was so important to push this through, to go through with this? What was the issue? And if there's a way to explain that to the community, that this is either a safety thing, something that's really standing in a way, Village of Monroe is over 100 years, okay, this beautiful place is over here. What was the reason that this had to go through with all the oppositions? And the reason why I'm asking is because what's going to happen is, I mean, people are going to put in lawsuits against this, this is going to open up a whole can of worms now, because they're not going to, I mean, again, religious, religion is very strong thing by us and by everybody, should be. And when it comes to something that they feel that it's going against, I wouldn't say that anybody wanted to do it against their religion, but they feel that it's hurting them, it's gonna, they're going to push back. So I just want to know if there was any way that somebody could explain what was the reasoning behind this to push it through, when everybody knew there is opposition. I was standing, this is the third time I'm standing up about this law.
Mr. Mayor, do you wish for me to address?
Yeah, sure.
So, thank you for your comments. The law was not pushed through. The board started a comprehensive planning process a couple of years ago. This was one law that was adopted in consort with several other local laws that are now backed up by the comprehensive plan. So it wasn't pushed through. It applies to every place of worship, and it is equally applied to all. And so I'm sorry if the village is being threatened with lawsuits, but the fact is that the board spent considerable amount of time, and I think the local law itself, as well as the comprehensive plan, explains why the village board felt that this was necessary, so that all religious rights are protected, as well as the neighborhoods and the community at large.
Well, I understand and I hear what you're saying, but if you go through precedent and history from all the other villages and other towns that tried doing the same thing, it always turned back at the end after spending millions and millions of dollars of taxpayers' money, and this is what's going to happen over here, for sure. It's just, why do we need this process? This is a beautiful, quiet, peaceful place, that everybody lives in peace, everybody's helping out each other, and this is not going to cause any traffic, if that's the cause, it's just people together and do their prayers and do it peacefully, and it's been like this for many, many years over here. I mean, the community moved in, started moving in years ago, and again, maybe, maybe there was something that caused this, but at the end of the game, it's going to be turned back, because look through all the towns and villages that tried to do the same thing, and it's not, Monroe is not the first village that tried going through this, and it was all turned back after millions of dollars. So why spending all these millions of dollars to go through this? It will be turned back, it's not going to go through. I'm telling you, it's, it's going to be turned back.
I would disagree, sir, respectfully, and I believe that the village board, again, is trying to protect your rights as well as every other person who lives in this village. The law's neutral, it's applied equally neutrally to all. The planning board process is the process, and it will proceed exponentially, as it always does with applicants who come forward and seek the proper approvals.
And I understand that, and like I said, it's, it's, I'm just telling you the history from other towns and villages that tried to do the same, and at the end it was turned back, and we could disagree, time will tell, time will tell. Because people are not going to sit back and, and just not go to pray, you understand that, they will go to pray, they have to.
This law does not prevent that from happening.
It doesn't prevent it, but it prevents, it makes them go through a step which we all know takes months and sometimes years.
I'm not going to agree to that statement.
You agree that you have to go through a new process?
I think that the people who wish to have worship in their homes or anywhere else, any worship, will have to go through the process to protect the neighborhood itself. So with that, I think that's going to be the end of my comments.
Okay, and I appreciate that, I appreciate that. And like I said, let's see where this is, this is going to take us, okay? And like I said, this is not, not impersonal, this is something that, I just want to let you know how we feel, and, and like I say, it's, it's something that we really want to see, that we should be able to live in peace and live together and see what we can do, okay? Good luck, happy holidays to all of you. See you later.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wish to speak?
Good evening. My name is Lee Podeuch. Just to be clearly that this law was specially done against the Jewish community. The county came out with a letter, and which was not mentioned here, when saying about the, all the documents went through, was a letter from the county, was one of the comments from the county saying that to sit down with the religious people, the neighborhood to see, to make sure this is not going to do against them, and this was absolutely the opposite. This is preventing from people.
Mr. Mayor, that was a local determination. There was a comment in the, from the county, 239, however, the bottom line was it's a local determination, and it is a local determination.
And that's why it was passed, to do something against the community.
I object to that statement, that is not true.
It is true, because we can do patering in a home many times a year, but praying more than 12 times a year is not allowed. This is absolutely against the community. This is a part of the law. And even the Attorney General came out with that, was asking, and nothing was done. So the, this is for the community, we're trying to live together, we're trying, asking to sit down with the neighbors and seeing what we can do to work it out for everybody's benefit. Everybody needs a shul for Shabbos, nobody's driving, and to be having a neighborhood shul and not allowing that, this is absolutely not right. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the public like to speak on this matter? Okay, let the record show that no one else has asked or wished to speak upon this matter, or any matter in the village. This time I ask for a motion to. Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I would ask for a short executive session. There are a couple of pending litigation matters that I'd like to bring the board up to date on.
Okay. Okay, if no further public comment is, wishes to come forward, then. No, okay. So I need, I need a motion to go into executive for attorney-client.
Barringer will make the motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Y, aye, so carried. Thank you all for attending, I appreciate. Have a great night. Happy Hanukkah to everyone.